August 18th meeting of the Cookeville City Council to order, whoever will call please.
Councilman Womack.
Here.
Councilman Miller. Mayor Shelton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Wheaton.
Here.
Councilman Walker.
Here.
For present.
At this time, I'd like to invite those that wish to do so to stand for the invocation given tonight by my pastor Bobby Davis of Life Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States flag. Father, first of all, thank you for this wonderful community that you've graced us with, Lord. We thank you for your hand of protection upon us. Father, we thank you, Lord, for now our leadership, Lord, in this city. Thank you, Lord, for those that's led us to this point, and Father, those that's coming in to continue to lead us. Father, we just thank you for your wisdom that's going to be upon them. You said if we ask for wisdom, that you'll give it to us generously. So we ask you for that. Lord, just continue to place your grace upon each and every one of them, and we give you the praise for it in the strong name of your Son Jesus. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the power of which you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank Pastor Bobby. Adam three, consider approval of agenda as presented. Are there any changes?
No changes.
Is there a motion?
Come on in.
Motion, second, any discussion? All vote.
Oh, it's correct. Or yes, motion carries.
Thank you under.
Motion carries.
Thank you under old business five A, consider approval of minutes of council meeting held on August 4th, 2022. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion, second, any discussion? All vote.
All votes correct. Or yes, motion carries.
I behold a public hearing, consider on first reading, consider on second and final reading ordinance oh two two zero eight one seven, amending the budget of the Quality of Life Fund of the City of Cookeville for fiscal year into June 30, 2023. Ms. Emel.
Counsel, this amendment appropriates $120,000 in additional expenditures in the Quality of Life Fund for projects recently approved by council. There have been no changes in the ordinance since first reading, and I respectfully request your approval.
All right. At this time, we'll open the public hearing portion. Is anyone that would like to speak about this matter? All right, we'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion, second, any discussion from the council? All vote.
All votes correct. Or yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Five C, consider on second and final reading ordinance oh two two zero eight one eight, amending the municipal code of the City of Cookeville, Title Eight, Alcoholic Beverages, Chapter Four, Beer. Mr. Coons.
This ordinance changes the sale of beer on Sundays from noon to 10:00 AM. We've received no comments, and I recommend approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion, second, any discussion? All vote.
All votes correct. Or yes, motion carries.
Consider consent agenda six A, consider warning bids for annual and semi-annual materials, entire recapping services for Public Works. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
Motion, second, any discussion? All vote.
All votes correct. Or yes, motion carries.
Under new business, seven A, consider resolution R two two zero eight two seven, authorizing utilization and management of certain city-owned property by the Cookeville Regional Medical Center. Mr. Mills.
Mayor and council members, earlier this year, the city purchased some property on Cedar as part of a settlement agreement with MCCD LLC. The properties are identified as parcels eight, 10, and 11 on Tax Map 53B Group J, a considerable about nine tenths of an acre. The Cookeville Medical Centers approached us about an interest in utilizing the property for hospital purposes, including much-needed parking. The Medical Center board, in fact, has recently approved compensating the city with the purchase price for the property in exchange for the ability to use and manage the property. The resolution before the council had approved, Cookeville Medical Centers used and managed the property in exchange for the purchase price of the three parcels. Also, although it's not specified in the resolution, the city would also agree to remove the existing structure located on the property. I would recommend your approval of the resolution and for your authorization to remove the existing structure.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion, second, any discussion?
I'd just like to say, I think this is a great thing for downtown availability to parking as well. This will open up an additional parking lot downtown that's directly adjacent to the west side for public use, and that's a, that's a good benefit to the city. That was formerly managed by CRNC.
Any more comments? All right, all vote.
All votes correct. Three yes, motion carries.
Seven D, consider resolution R two two zero eight two eight, authorizing a grant application for the Blue Cross Healthy Place Grant Program for Leisure Services. Rick Woods.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Blue Cross Blue Shield of Tennessee Foundation provides 100% funding for projects that develop spaces in our community that connect people and that are healthy spaces. This Healthy Place Grant Program has been in existence for five years and has developed 22 projects across the state. The 22, 2022 grant application window is now open through the month of August for projects to be awarded in 2023. We have a site plan for development of a new community connective, for new community connectivity and active spaces at Kane Creek Park that came out of our most recent master planning process, and it fits very well with grant criteria and the goals of the Blue Cross Healthy Place Program. Our project requests will include a large, fully accessible playground, splash pad, pickleball courts, tennis courts, a fitness court, a pavilion, and additional shade structures, restrooms, and added parking. I have several slides. I think you've seen there's some slides up there. Other projects YMCA in Nashville, they did a large project, $6.4 million project there. Highland Park in Chattanooga was a $5 million project, fully funded by Blue Cross Blue Shield Foundation, Blue Cross Healthy Places. Some of them include splash pads. There are some layouts that you see on your screen. And then ours, the one that you're seeing now, our layout, that includes some of the projects or some of the amenities that I just mentioned. So I am requesting your authorization through this resolution to submit a grant application to Blue Cross Healthy Place Program for this particular project, and I would recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion, second. Any discussion from the council? All vote.
All votes correct. Or yes, motion carries.
Thank you. C, consider approval of 2022 Wellness Screening Program Agreement. Carl Sales.
Mayor, council, as you all know, the city has partnered for many years with the Cookeville Regional Medical Center in order to provide a very valuable wellness screening program to city employees. I'm here tonight simply to ask you to authorize Mr. Mills to enter into a contract so that that wellness screening program can be offered to our employees this fall. It will cover several screenings at no cost and a variety of screenings at a very greatly reduced cost, and it's a very valuable program. We would request you to authorize that.
All right. Is there a motion?
So move.
Motion, second. Any questions from the council?
I just want to say thank you for making sure that we get this program through. It's so beneficial for our employees. So thank you.
Well, on behalf of the HR department, you're welcome.
Any other comments? All right, all vote.
All votes correct. Or yes, motion carries.
Seventy, consider accepting offer on surplus property located at 545 Woodmont Circle for the Water Quality Control Department. Barry Turner.
Mayor and members of the council, this house was declared surplus May the 2022. Previous offer that I presented to you fell through. This offer is for $299,900. It does have some contingencies, including that appraisal meet or exceed the offer, and there's a kickout clause, so we can't accept other offers if they don't meet some criteria, and I recommend that we accept this offer.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So move.
Motion, second. Any questions or comments from the council? All vote.
All votes correct. Or yes, motion carries.
Thank you. And our last agenda item is seven E, receiving considered certified election returns from the city council election held on August 4, 2022. Mr. Coons.
Mayor and council, you have in your books the certified election returns for the Cookeville City Council election that was held on August the 4th, 2022. I recommend accepting these results as submitted with the following individuals being elected to the next Cookeville City Council: Lauren Wheaton, Luke Eldridge, Eric Walker, Ali Baji, and Chad Gilbert.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So move.
Motion, second. Any comments or questions? All vote.
All votes correct.
That concludes our agenda portion. We'll have time at the end for hearing from current council. Dr. Womack?
Well, I want to thank the present council, and I want to thank the employees of the City of Cookeville, and I want to thank all Cookevillians for giving me this opportunity to work since 1998 with four, four elections, and I've enjoyed it. It's been interesting, but I've enjoyed it more or less, and I'm getting to the point, I'm getting to the point where I'm getting older, and I'm happy to be term limited and step down and not run again for anything. So my wife and I moved here in 1975, and the first two sessions on the city council from 98 to 06, I was working as a medical doctor, and that made life interesting. But the last eight years with this council and the previous one have been a lot more enjoyable because I wasn't working a full-time job. So I think the new members on the council will find working their job and doing the city council to be very busy. So we appreciate what's happened here, and we've, my wife and I have seen Cookeville double in size and the county double in size since 1975, and it's been a good experience for our family. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Womack. Councilman Walker?
Yeah, I'd like to kind of echo some of that. I appreciate Chuck, Mark, and Ricky for their service. Chuck and Ricky especially, they've got a lot of, lot of years of service here, and within that there's a very respectable effort to, to work for the city. You know, it is no small task to sit up here and, and come to all the meetings and be involved and do this stuff. And so to do that for that long, I have a great appreciation for that. And I'm excited to be able to have the opportunity to serve again, but I certainly appreciate this last council I've had the privilege to serve with.
I mean, it's been an honor and privilege to be one of the five city council members that sits up here and makes some pretty big decisions for this city. Thank y'all both for your service, for what you've done, for what you've taught us, and for just loving Cookeville with, with all y'all's heart, and you can tell because of how much time y'all have given to it. So y'all will be missed, and we're excited about the next four years.
Thanks to all three of you. What I have to say is going to take a minute, so y'all are going to bear with me. So 20 years ago, the citizens of Cookeville gave me the great opportunity to serve them on city council. For the past eight years, I've had the tremendous honor and privilege to serve as the 31st mayor of their wonderful city and the only place I've ever called home. Tonight, first, I want to thank God for wisdom and guidance. I know God put me in this position for this moment in time, and I tried to honor him in all that I did. I want to thank my wife Shannon and her children, family, and close friends for their unwavering love and support. People have no idea how much time this takes if you do it right, nor the stress on your family that is created by serving and the relentless personal attacks on your family and character. I want to thank my CRNC work family and team for their support these past 20 months. I want to thank Pastor Bobby Davis and Life Church for the support and guidance, and a special thanks to the prayer warrior for Shannon and I, Ms. Sharon. I wish to also thank the citizens who have allowed me this extended opportunity to serve you, and I wish to thank you for your citizenship that has allowed this city to become a finer, more beautiful, and livable city. I've greatly enjoyed working with city manager James Mills and Tracy, each of their department heads, and our dedicated city employees that make our city run smoothly each and every day. They all share the same love and commitment that I have to the betterment of our city, and we are fortunate to have such dedicated public employees working hard to continue to grow Cookeville. Teamwork is so important, and success is best when it's shared, and that's exactly what I've been blessed to be able to do for the past eight years. It's been an honor to serve alongside my good friend County Mayor Randy Porter. Teamwork begins by building trust, and he and I had trust as our baseline. In both good times and bad, no matter what other distractions or issues were swirling, or who was or wasn't on board with the mission we were trying to accomplish for our community, Randy and I continued to partner and work together daily as a team to lead our city and county to new levels of success. We never worried about who got the credit, only that the work got done, and on the days when we were giving daily reports to the city, doing it with Randy made it all the better. Very few communities have the working relationship that he and I have had over the past eight years. This quote from Andrew Carnegie defines Randy and I's work. Teamwork is the ability to work together toward a common vision is the fuel that allows common people to attain uncommon results. During my time in office, our city has seen both unprecedented challenges and record-breaking successes. As a city, we've navigated the most devastating tornado in history, winter storms, and of course, the COVID-19 pandemic. Our response to the tornado highlighted the heart and amazing kindness of the people that live here and those that responded to us. It also showcased amazing first responders and emergency management team we are blessed with here. While navigating those crisis situations, we have also experienced unprecedented, record-breaking economic growth and success, a commercial and residential construction boom, and a greater commitment to quality of life opportunities than at any time in our city's history. When I became mayor in 2014, my campaign platform was simple, establishing fireworks and a Fourth of July celebration, quality of life initiatives and events for families, keeping our downtown vibrant, and more economic growth and prosperity. I'm extremely proud to report, as I end my tenure as mayor, that we have kept each of our campaign promises. We increased transparency and accountability, grew the local economy, made historic investments in our city's infrastructure, had an unwavering commitment to beautification and revitalization, were good stewards of taxpayer dollars by managing our city's finances efficiently, and maintained a steadfast commitment to our quality of life while always putting God first. Great strides have been made over the past eight years, and our city is in a better position today than when we all started. In our city manager form of government, every person on the council has an equal vote pushing the same button. Being mayor isn't meant to be a full-time job. Some people even call it a weak mayor position, but in truth, it's only a weak position if the person with the title isn't willing to put in the time, energy, passion, work, and extra effort to truly be a visionary leader. The leadership of the mayor is crucial because it is the mayor that people look to, to provide the vision, the energy, the influence, and the sense of confidence during good times, and especially the rebuilding recovery after bad times. My dad always taught me, if something is worth doing, do it right and give it 110%. I spent the time and effort being mayor like it was a full-time job, and I took it very personal in that the responsibilities are not abstract or theoretical, but rather direct, specific, and intimate. The responsibility for your and your children's safety at home, at work, on the streets, for your neighborhood parks to be safe, beautiful, and active, for your and your children's play, for your garbage and trash to be neatly collected, your neighborhoods peaceful and tidy, an economy bustling to benefit your livelihood, a city growing in fiscal strength and fairness, your reasoned optimism for your future, to serve you in times of crisis, and so much more. Even though the city manager carries out the administrative duties, I was contacted thousands of times to connect you to who can help with your issue, problem, or question. Over the past eight years, we've worked hard and utilized social media to communicate like never before. Through that, I've had the opportunity to hear from you, your letters, emails, direct messages, posts, phone calls, meetings, and so many other encounters. Through those thousands of ways of communicating, I got to know you, feel and appreciate your goodness, and get to understand your heart's wishes. It inspired me to work harder, to do more, and do it better, and to never give up or give in. So in the totality of my work as mayor, it was always personal, making our city better and the happiness and well-being of every citizen in our city. Through all of our encounters and communications, I also got to know your hearts, that is, what you would find most fulfilling, what would enrich your lives and the lives of your children, what would make you happy and proud of your city. And then together, with passion and hard work, we all undertook to turn those aspirations into reality, whether it was seeking to make our city safer and more livable, restoring downtown, building parks, creating a host of popular events, or attracting new, better jobs, and more retail and shopping opportunities. These achievements we accomplished together. Some became embroiled in controversy, but what kept me going, pushing, having the resolve not to give up, was that I knew that if the goal was achieved, the project or initiative completed, your hearts would be fulfilled, and it would make you happy and proud to be a citizen of Cookeville. I appreciate the countless messages, texts, and words of support. Those always came at just the right time. Reminds me of the saying, keep living your life in a way that touches people, and at some point you will. You never know who or when. I would like to conclude with these thoughts for our city and its future. My entire life, I've heard people say I wish someone would get in office and not be swayed by public opinion. They just stick to their beliefs and do a good job. I will live the rest of my life with great pride in knowing that I have done just that as mayor of my hometown. My decisions were never based on what is politically popular, but always what is best for Cookeville. When a person sticks to principles, they often have to endure personal attacks and attempts to cancel them from the public, and sometimes even from people they work with. And I'm proud to have taken strong stances out of principle and have no regrets about the positions I've taken on matters of importance during my 16 years of public service. And I know this, I'm not who others say I am, I'm who God says I am. And as leaders, we must always be guided by the standard of excellence. That is, what have the responsibility to seek excellence in everything we do? Medium is beneath the goodness and quality of the citizens of our city. We must look well into the future and ask ourselves if what we are considering will be deemed excellent in 25 or even 50 years from now. And this is ever more important in a time of robust economic growth. It is easy to willingly accept mediocrity, and it is hard to demand excellence, but that is what this great city and its citizens deserve. As the Athenian oath states, "We have a duty to leave our city not only as beautiful, but more beautiful than we found it." And as I leave office, I can state that by every measurable indicator of success, the state of our city is strong. We were able to leave our city better than we found it, and we are poised for even greater success in the future. And I look forward to seeing our city's continued growth. When I was elected, when I was elected into office, I took the lead from active mayors across the country about the importance of social media and communicating with the public in real time. And I will continue to use the communication platforms that you've come to know and trust, my Facebook and Instagram pages, to keep the public updated and informed, share news, promote businesses, events, and initiatives to better Cookeville, and continue to influence our city, county, and region to greater successes. In a few moments, for the last time, I will repeat a practice that I've done about 200 times over the past eight years. At the end of the meeting, I will gavel the meeting adjourned, walk down the steps, and go to the warmth, love, and integrity of my wife, our family, and our home. But even though for now, my time in this office and serving you will be over, the memories will never leave me, and they will nourish me every day of my life. One of my favorite verses from the Bible, Isaiah 4031 says, "But they who wait for the Lord shall renew their strength; they shall mount up with wings like eagles; they shall run and not be weary; they shall walk and not faint." Whether I serve again in a local, state, or national office, it will be a prayerful decision directed by God and supported by my family. Thank you again for the tremendous honor and privilege of allowing me to serve two terms as your mayor. Now, my wife has a very long honeydew list for me to get started on. May God continue to bless and keep each of you, and may God bless Cookeville, Tennessee, and the United States of America. Thank you, and good night. Thank you all very much. Now, make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
And make a motion to adjourn. Sinead A.
Second.
Second. All right, all those in favor, I guess we have to vote on this one. All those in favor?
All votes correct. Or yes, motion carries.
Adjourn.
Y'all bear with us just for a couple minutes while we do a switch on the voting system, and we'll get back going here in just a minute. Thank you for your patience. I now call this meeting of the Cookeville City Council to order. At this time, the newly elected members of the Cookeville City Council will take their oaths of office. This evening, administering those oaths will be the Honorable Judge Gary McKenzie. The ministering those oaths will be the Honorable Judge Gary McKenzie. Come forward, please.
Please raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Eric Walters.
I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Tennessee.
The Constitution of the State of Tennessee.
The Charter of the City of Cookeville.
The Charter of the City of Cookeville.
And then I will.
And I will.
Faithfully perform.
Faithfully perform.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of councilman.
Of councilman.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
And which I am about to assume.
And which I am about to assume.
Congratulations.
We now call the roll. Councilman Baji, here. Councilman Gilbert, here. Councilman Wheaton.
Here.
Councilman Eldridge, here. Councilman Walker.
Here.
By present.
All right, we have a forum. The first item we have on the agenda is consider approval of the agenda as presented. The agenda has been revised to remove item 13A, which is the appointment of the councils represented to serve on the planning commission. So I would recommend your approval of the agenda as amended. Motion.
Motion due.
Second.
Men of agendas.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Well, we have a few. We don't have to use those.
Yeah. Before he starts, he forgot.
First rodeo.
Vibeas motion carries.
All right, item 13B is election of mayor. I would entertain a nomination for mayor.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate former Vice Mayor Lauren Wheaton as our new mayor. I'll say.
All vote.
All votes correct. Vibeas motion carries.
All right, Lauren Wheaton's been elected mayor of the city of Cookeville.
Oh, that ticked over.
Luke Eldridge, turn the meeting over to you.
Okay. Item 13C, election of the Vice Mayor. I would like to nominate Luke Eldridge for Vice Mayor.
Second.
Motion is seconded. Any discussion? All vote.
That's correct. Vibeas motion carries.
Thank you. Congratulations, Luke. Item 13D, announcement of mayor's appointment to the planning commission. I have the honor of appointing Bob Fallhaber to the planning commission. I'm excited about his representation on there. I know he's going to do a great job. He already showed up to the meeting today and hasn't even been fully appointed, so I thank him for that. That doesn't make a vote, correct?
No.
Okay. All right. Item 13F, consider resolution R220824, commending Mayor Ricky Shelton for serving on city council. Whereas Ricky Shelton faithfully served as mayor of the city of Cookeville from August 2014 to August 2022. And whereas Ricky Shelton, a community advocate devoted to his family and the growth of Cookeville, has fervently served the citizens of the city with an affinity for his hometown. And whereas Mr. Shelton has generously given his time as his tenure as a public servant for Cookeville, has included four terms on the city council over the years. As mayor, he has led with enthusiasm, passion, and an earnest desire to see the community thrive. And whereas with a vision to achieve positive growth, Ricky has been engaged and supportive of economic development, seeing many projects come to fruition during his tenure as mayor. And whereas a champion for community enrichment and events, Mayor Shelton organized and began two beloved events, Red, White, and Boom, along with Christmas in the Park, which have continued participation as a cherished tradition. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of Cookeville, Tennessee, that on behalf of the citizens and employees of the city of Cookeville, deepest appreciation is hereby extended to Ricky Shelton for the tremendous contribution he has made towards the growth and improvement of the quality of life in the city of Cookeville. Now therefore, be it further resolved that this resolution shall duly be recorded and filed in the city clerk's office adopted this 18th day of August, 2022. Yeah, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion seconded. Any discussion? All right.
Vibeas motion carries.
Item 13G, consider resolution R220825, commending Councilman Charles Womack for his service on the city council. Whereas Dr. Charles Womack faithfully served as city councilman for the city of Cookeville from August 2014 to August 2022. And whereas Dr. Womack, a retired physician, conservationist, and steadfast devoted to his family and grandchildren, has energetically served the citizens of the city with a fervent belief, a civic duty for the common good of all. And whereas Dr. Charles Womack's tenure as a public servant for the citizens of Cookeville has included four terms as a city council member over the years, presiding as mayor from 1998 to 2006, he has graciously served the community he calls home. And whereas with a genuine care for the health of others, Dr. Womack has spurred programs within the city for the health and well-being of the community at large, seeing multiple projects come to fruition during his tenure that have included the use of AEDs, Narcan, and EpiPens by the Cookeville Police Department, which is catalyst for implementation at departments across the United States. And whereas as an advocate for parks and green space, Dr. Womack's tireless commitment is evident in frequent locations throughout the city, including Dogwood Park, the Tennessee Central Highway Heritage Rail Trail, as well as outdoor spaces throughout the upper Cumberland region. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of Cookeville, Tennessee, that on behalf of the citizens and employees of the city of Cookeville, deepest appreciation is hereby extended to Dr. Charles Womack for the tremendous contribution he has made towards the growth and improvement of the quality of life in the city of Cookeville. Now therefore, be it resolved that this resolution shall be duly recorded and filed in the clerk, city clerk's office adopted this 18th day of August, 2022. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion seconded. Any discussion? All right.
All votes correct. Vibeas motion carries.
Thank you. Item 13H, consider resolution R220826, commending Councilman Mark Miller for serving on city council. Whereas Mark Miller faithfully served as councilman for the city of Cookeville from August 2014 to August 2022. And whereas Mr. Miller, a local entrepreneur, adoring father and husband, has earnestly served the community, all while leaving a lasting impression of the importance of service for his son Max. And whereas during his tenure in public service, Mr. Miller has been dedicated to positive growth, fiscal responsibility, and infrastructure improvements. And whereas Mr. Mark Miller, Mark Miller's devotion to the community he calls home, has been evident with his work and desire to continue Cookeville's atmosphere of family-friendly activities, parks, and facilities, his promotion of the arts, and support of the employees, all of which has contributed to tourism and betterment of Cookeville. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of Cookeville, Tennessee, that on behalf of the citizens and employees of the city of Cookeville, deepest appreciation is hereby extended to Mark Miller for the tremendous contribution he has made toward the growth and improvement of the quality of life in the city of Cookeville. Now therefore, be it resolved that this resolution shall be duly recorded and filed in the city clerk's office adopted this 18th day of August, 2022. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion is seconded. Any discussion? All right.
All votes correct. Vibeas motion carries.
That concludes the agenda portion of this meeting. I'm sure we have some council members who would like to speak.
First of all, I'd like to thank the citizens of Cookeville for their confidence in me. I would like to also thank my wife, Michelle, son Reagan, and my mother-in-law, Patsy, for their support during this entire campaign. And I'm also looking forward to serving with each and every one of you. I know that we've developed a bond over the election cycle, and we had opportunities to meet backstage and get to know one another, so I really believe that we can use that relationship and build on it. And I'm looking forward to also building on the successes of the previous council, moving Cookeville in the right direction. And I also would like to ask for your prayers for not only me, but for the entire council, that God give us wisdom and discernment in decisions we have to make.
I'd like to echo the gratitude to the voters, the city of Cookeville, as became routine in some of the campaign events. You want to express that you're from Cookeville and make it clear that you're passionate about the good things that are going on here and the growth and all the things that we're all aware of. But just a sincere thank you to everyone that put that confidence in me and looking forward to working hard to prove that. I want to thank my family, they're here tonight, wife Anna and kids, they're looking at me now, Riley Cooper and Ally Jane, and my parents. Thank you so much for all the support. About this group, I'm really excited. This is a bright group of folks, and looking forward to what we can do together and just keep all the good that has been given us, the baton of good that's been given us and running with that.
To start with, I'm very excited to serve for another four years. And first off, just thanking the people of Cookeville and the business owners, the residents. Cookeville and Putnam County, you know, when you go through something like a campaign, you really, you pour your heart into it, and you meet a lot of great people, and there's a lot of great candidates. And just to be chosen and supported by so many people to be back on the council is an exciting thing. Looking forward, and I also want to thank my family. You know, you can't do this without family support. You know, there's a lot of time commitment and a lot of things that you have to prioritize. And without your family behind you, you just can't get anything done. So there, thank you all. I appreciate it. The other thing, we've got a great council moving forward. I think we've got a strong mayor with Lauren Wheaton at the helm, and I look forward to our new leadership and everything that we're going to work towards as a council is an exciting time, and just an exciting time for Cookeville. The growth is amazing in our city, and how we navigate that going forward will be a good thing for this council. Thank you.
Well, I would like to, number one, thank God, obviously. I would not do this without him. I want to thank my family for being here. I've got my mother-in-law, my father, my mom, my grandma, I got a whole row back there, it looks like, and my niece, nephew, and my brother-in-law and sister-in-law, I said, son, whatever he is, and my pastor. It's good to have, obviously, your pastor always supporting you as well in something like this, so I appreciate that. But, you know, I want to thank Mayor Shelton and your family for everything, too. I got to know you eight years ago, and it was an honor then, and it's an honor now, but I appreciate everything you poured into me and helped me. Why can't I get some?
Big deal.
That's a big deal. But, no, I do appreciate it. Appreciate your insight, appreciate you talking to my wife and encouraging, but also thank the whole community. You guys saw a fit to put me in as vice mayor, and I appreciate that. And I'll do my hardest to work for you guys, and we do have a great team up here. This is a good team. I think we will work well together, and I'm excited to see what these next four years hold, so I do appreciate it. Thank you.
So before we adjourn, I'll be respectful of y'all's time here, but I must say, we must say, that thank you once again. It is the beacon of a new beginning. I was told today that beginning is the most important part of any work, and I believe that to be true. We are excited about this new and distinct chapter in the history of Cookeville. You've given us your trust, and in exchange for a promise to lead this city with confidence, humility, and class, this evening we have accepted that responsibility. With new beginnings also comes new opportunities. I want to take this opportunity to define to you how I intend to lead Cookeville. As the only second female ever to hold this position, I want to instill confidence in the mayor's seat. I want to assure local businesses that they have my support, and their efforts will be highlighted. I want to protect and promote traditions that have made Cookeville a special place to all of us. I want to highlight the people of this community and not the position of this office. I want to thank my family for being here, my parents, my in-laws, my husband Wade, my son Palmer, he's not paying attention, big moment here, bud, just any, yeah, okay, my daughter Kennedy. Thank y'all for your support. I could not have done this without y'all, and I could not have done this without this community. I'm excited about the opportunity to serve with these council members. We're going to make a great team, we're going to do great things for Cookeville, and thank you for your trust. Uh, yeah, that's it. Sorry, not used to this part. So, meeting's adjourned.